Good morning, everyone. It's 9:03, and I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Establish that we have a quorum. We're missing Terry, and I'm not sure if she's going to make it in today or not. But six out of seven is enough. It's a quorum. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The commission may request for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for presentation and public comment. Otherwise, the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by staff with no opposition received to date. Since some items on the consent agenda may require a public hearing, the commission will accept public comment on any item on the consent agenda in one public hearing. So item A, consideration of the December 13th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting minutes, and there's a replat. So I'm going to open up public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on the consent agenda, please come forward. State your name and address or single-member district. All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-zero. Item two is the election of chair and vice chair. So let's start with chairman. Anyone want to make a motion?
Move to nominate Travis for another term.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for me to remain as chairman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-zero. All right, vice chair. Anyone wish to make a motion on vice chair?
Move to nominate Terry Jackson as vice chair.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Terry as vice chair. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-zero. All right, we're going to move this stuff around. There's a lot of folks in the room, and I think the sidewalks and street widths are probably the main reason that you're here, so we're going to start with it. This is item five. Excuse me, this is item... Yeah, five. Text amendments. Consideration of an ordinance amending the land development and subdivision ordinance renaming Chapter Nine as Chapter Nine, Land Development and Subdivision Design Policies, and restating in its entirety Chapter Nine, Five, Sidewalks, creating a new process and standards for sidewalk construction. B, consideration of an ordinance amending the land development and subdivision ordinance, Chapter Ten, Construction Standards and Specifications, Section Three, Wits, and Graphic Specifications, Subsection A, Wits, and Chapter Three, Definitions, Revising Street Paving and Right-of-Way Standards and Related Definitions. Mr. James.
Thank you. John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. So you saw this item back at your November meeting. You all gave some direction on the ordinance, and so the ordinance before you has made those changes. Just a summary of the major items. You all recommended sidewalks on arterial and major collector streets. You recommended not requiring sidewalks on local streets in single-family areas, but you left open the question of minor collector streets. There was some discussion back and forth, and so you basically deferred that to discuss at a future meeting, which hopefully we can do today. As you all asked us to do, we met with a subgroup of the Development Task Force, who we've been meeting with over the past few months, or actually a couple of years, to try to reach consensus, and we think we've done that. We've got a revised draft. With the exception of that minor collector issue, we've got a revised draft that everyone is supportive of, and that's the draft before you. I'm just going to highlight a couple of the changes. There's a lot of wording changes to clarify things, but really weren't substantive, and so I'm not going to detail all of those, but you can see them in your redline version. But we did clarify that the sidewalk requirements only apply to the part of the ETJ where the city reviews subdivisions, so it wouldn't apply outside of that. We had talked last time about that there was a reference in the ordinance for sidewalk design standards, and that was a maybe three- or four-page document of specific design standards for sidewalks, and you all wanted to see that back. As we looked at that, one of your directions was if it's regulated by the Texas Accessibility Standards or the ADA, we don't need to repeat that in ordinance or design guideline. And given some of your other direction last time, most of what was in that document was not necessary. And so what we've done is basically got rid of that document and put in the three or four provisions that we still needed into this draft ordinance. So it's all together now. And as I mentioned, there's some amendments, just to clean up wording. There's a cross-reference to Texas Accessibility Standards that we had some wrong terminology, but again, nothing substantive. We also removed the neighborhood plan. There's a provision that says if there's a designated pedestrian route, even if it's not, if it wouldn't normally require sidewalks, if it's a designated pedestrian route, it would. So for example, there are, there's a Safe Routes to Schools grant program, and we can adopt a Safe Routes to School plan that can show the primary routes that kids get from the neighborhoods to a school. And so if we were to adopt a Safe Routes to School plan, which we don't have currently, that showed specific sidewalk routes to get to schools, that would also become part of the sidewalk requirement in those designated areas. But any of those plans would have to come to you all for recommendation and city council for adoption, so it's not, you know, it's not anything that would happen administratively. We also eliminated a requirement that was in the previous draft, that if there was a gap in sidewalks of 250 feet or less, that would require a sidewalk between the two to close that gap, and we took that out. We reduced the distance from a school park or church where sidewalks would be required from 500 to 300 feet. And then we clarified, there's a provision that says if sidewalks, if it's where sidewalks wouldn't otherwise be required, but there are existing sidewalks, then you would have to include a sidewalk. So for example, there are parts of Santa Rita that have, had historically been built with sidewalks, but some of those have been taken out over the years. And so if more than half of that block still has sidewalks, and you're redeveloping a vacant property, for example, you would also have to put in a sidewalk. The clarification here was to say within that same zoning district. So if you've got half a block that's commercial and half a block that's residential, just because the commercial has sidewalks, that wouldn't trigger sidewalks in the residential part unless more than half of the residential part has sidewalks. And there's one more change that wasn't in your packet. There was some back and forth by email with that group last week, and this was partly raised by legal staff, that Section C2 duplicates what was in E1, and so our recommendation is to eliminate C2, but then we revised E1. It reads, it will read the same as it does now, except it'll add that where required by this ordinance language. So that's real, I want you to consider that part of the staff recommendation. We did send this out to that group. Not everyone responded, but we did get a response indicating that that was, they were comfortable with that. But again, a number of them are here if they have any concerns with it. But again, it's removing a duplication where there was, you know, two items saying almost the same thing, but there was a conflict in the wording. So what we're asking from you is, we need that direction on minor collector streets, whether or not to require sidewalks, and then we're recommending this ordinance as it's been presented to you with that change I noted. I have a couple of, here's just a list for just samples of streets around town, just so you get an understanding. I think you saw this last time, of what the different classifications of streets are, so some examples of each different type. We can come back to this if you want in a second, but then here's also a map that shows all of the major, major and minor arterials and major and minor collectors throughout town. And so the ones we're really talking about are the lighter blue color. Those are the minor collectors. So you can see, they're not the main streets, the major streets through town, but they're the, they're the streets, when you come off of your local street onto the slightly bigger street that gets you out of your neighborhood, that's basically what a minor collector is. And again, we can come back to this if you all want to see it again or have questions. But again, just what we're asking from you is that direction on the minor collectors, so we can revise that ordinance as necessary, and then recommend you adopt the ordinance. I know you wanted to talk about the street widths as well, so I can go through that, but if first, I wanted to stop and see if you have any questions or comments on the sidewalk piece.
I have one question. You were talking about ETJ subdivisions and reviewing only certain ones. What are the criteria for establishing subdivisions that are reviewed and are not?
Well, that's a good question, and I should have mentioned that. In the ETJ, there is an exception already, and I want to get the number right. Basically, it's exempted if your, if lots are over an acre inside, or an acre or more in size anyway. And so most developments we're seeing in the ETJ, sidewalks wouldn't apply anyway, because the lots are larger. But if so, we do have some folks that are developing smaller lots right at the edge of town, that the anticipation is it'll be annexed and developed. In those areas where they're building smaller lots, typically, one of the distinctions is urban versus rural street. So if they're building smaller lots with an urban street, then sidewalks would be required, where required. Again, we've exempted all local streets, so that's going to apply to most streets in the ETJ anyway.
Right.
We would really just be talking about minor collectors, depending on your direction on that, and then the bigger streets, the major collectors and arterials.
Okay.
So, you know, 90% of streets in the ETJ wouldn't require sidewalks anyway.
Right.
Either because of the street type or lot size.
Okay. Anyone else have, anyone else have questions on sidewalks? All right, let's continue.
Skip through this, those were if we had questions. So this was related, we think of these as related, the street width issue, because one of the reasons our street width standards were made so wide in the past was to accommodate pedestrians on the pavement itself. And so one of the reasons we paired these together is as we look at requiring sidewalks on some streets, there's maybe not as much of a need for that wide of a street, so we looked at narrowing the streets. I don't have a slide on it, but in your packet, I provided some information on some of our peer cities, and our streets were much wider than most of our peer cities. And so that's the other thing we looked at, is putting those things more in line with what's typical across the state. This, the other thing, as you'll note, with almost every month, we have plats where they're requesting variances from the street widths.
Yes.
And so anytime you see variances that frequently, that can indicate a problem with, not a problem, but that if you guys are giving variances consistently for certain types, then maybe we need to look at changing the ordinance. So that's another reason we looked at this. This has been the Development Task Course a number of times, and mostly positive feedback on narrowing the street standards. So this, it does, our proposal would decrease the street classifications or street standards for all the different classifications. So I won't read through all of those, but you can see, for example, major arterials under our current ordinance required to be 64 feet of pavement. It would go to 62. Local streets from 40 feet to 36 feet, and so on. Now with street right-of-way, the amount of land set aside for the street and utilities, et cetera, we're keeping most of those the same. There are a couple, the major arterials and major collectors, we thought we needed a little more right-of-way than we're getting, because we sometimes see problems with not being able to fit all the utilities. For example, when you've got, you know, now we've got fiber going in, you've got the telephone poles with electric lines, and all of the other things, you know, especially on things like major arterials, you've got traffic lights in those boxes that go with them, and so there's a lot of things that have to be outside of the pavement in the right-of-way. And so the major arterials and major collectors were proposing to widen by 10 feet. One of the big changes that we're recommending here is, all that we were just talking about were the standard widths. If you're going out to build a new street, that's what it has to be. Right now, under our ordinance, if you're redeveloping on an existing street, those standards are all the same. And so in areas that were built 50 years ago, the streets are too narrow. That's what a lot of the variances you're seeing is, our ordinance says those have to be widened to the standard as if you're building a new street. So what we're proposing is what we're calling a minimum width, so that if you're on an existing street and you're redeveloping, you, your standard is not the width as if you're building a new street. It's a reduced width standard that would accommodate a lot of the variance requests we've seen. There are still going to be streets that are even narrower than that, that they're going to have to add some widening or get a variance, but it does create that opportunity to have that narrower minimum width, both for pavement and for right-of-way. And so again, I'm not going to read through all these, it's in your packet, but just as an example, local streets right now require 50 feet of right-of-way. If you're in an existing area, that can be reduced down to 40, or the pavement width plus 10. So if, if the street's already wider, we at least want to get five feet on either side of additional right-of-way. And then the pavement width, again, a standard street, if you're constructing it, would have to be 36. This would allow 30-feet streets just by right, so they wouldn't have to come to you for a variance. If it's a street that's already out there that's 30 feet, we see a lot of those, and they have to come to you to say, well, staff's saying we have to widen our half by three feet to move closer to that 36-foot standard. This creates that minimum that you wouldn't have to do that. This is the same map from before, but as we talk about those street width standards, just a map to show all the different street classifications, if there are any questions about that. So staff is recommending approval of these changes to the street widths, both pavements and right-of-way. As I mentioned, we've heard very little negative input on this. At the end of the day, it's going to save developers money by not having to widen streets, or when they're building new streets, to make them narrower. I wish I would have provided it. We had done, when we started looking at this about a year ago, we did a review, and we just picked the bluffs and looked at, if these standards had been in place when the bluffs were built, it would have saved hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not into the millions, for the development costs, but it also saves the city. When we go out to seal coat or repair streets on our eight-year program to do that, it would save hundreds of thousands of dollars again, just for the resurfacing, because you'd be resurfacing a 36-foot street instead of 40, and those costs add up over, you know, over, you know, large areas. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this.
You want to have questions on?
I got a couple. In our discussions about street width and pavement width, or right-of-way width, I've been looking at the San Angelo Comprehensive Plan. Is that where the staff goes to review those minimums and standards?
Well, yes, yes and no. That's one of the things we look at. Now, our Comprehensive Plan is a little bit older, and so it doesn't necessarily mean that our recommendations match up with that perfectly, because part of it is what we've looked at in more recent years, in terms of the variance requests we've seen. One of the things we did to get to these widths was a GIS analysis of, so we looked at, for example, all the local streets throughout the whole city. We can tell how many, you know, what percent are, you know, meet the current standard, what percent are, you know, 30 feet wide or wider, what percent are 26 feet or wider. And so these widths would accommodate 80 to 90% of all the streets that are already in the city. And so that's another piece that we looked at, is to ensure that this new minimum width covered most of the streets that are already out there in the city.
I'm just, I'm looking at, there's a chart in, in that Comprehensive Plan that refers, you know, to right-of-ways and pavement widths, and where we have listed under current, for example, major collector streets, it shows San Angelo current right-of-way, 60 feet. The Comprehensive Plan listed at 80. So is there another place where this chart is published that you guys use? Or is that just, I guess I'm asking where you go to currently?
Well, yeah, currently, the Comprehensive Plan is a plan that recommends things like street widths and various other things, but the actual current street standards are in the subdivision ordinance.
Okay.
And so the chart that you see in your packet, that is the chart that looks like this, that's in the current ordinance, and we're just amending, basically amending the numbers that are in that table in the current ordinance.
The other thing I was curious about was, and I guess you kind of, you kind of addressed this, but just, could you talk a little bit more about when, I guess standard, our standard, what you're calling standard widths are going to apply to new subdivisions? Minimum is going to be infill lots or replats or?
Yeah, that's right. If you're going out to plat lots where there's already an existing street, then that minimum width would apply. If you're going out to greenland and just building brand-new, where there's not a street now, you'd have to build to that standard street width.
Okay. You good? All right, anyone else have questions?
Just a quick question on the sidewalks. In an area where there is a property or piece of land that does not have sidewalks, and now we've got sidewalks throughout the area except for one or two, either businesses or homes, you said that was not addressed, or they didn't have to do anything. What is, could you speak a little bit about that? What happens to those properties that, you know, aren't making any changes, and there's no sidewalks, so you have that, that broken sidewalk plan?
Well, under this ordinance, the only thing that would trigger sidewalks is going through some development process. So if, if you're sitting out there, you've got a business, you're running your business, and you're not, you know, you're not replating, you're not building new buildings, you're not redeveloping or anything, this doesn't make you do anything. It's only when you're going through a development process that would even consider triggering sidewalks. Then you would look at what type of street you're on, you know, is it single-family, you know, that kind of thing, to see this list of items where sidewalks would be required.
Is there any activity for the city to come in, step up, and maybe finish a road? Is there that opportunity as well?
There is. Right now, with any new street project, that's discussed among operations, engineering, and planning, and we look at, and you'll notice, most of the new street projects you've seen over the last few years have included sidewalks, at least on one side of the street. Not all of them, but, but most of them, and it's looked at for every single project. The other thing that we haven't done yet, but that's come up in this sidewalk ordinance discussion process, is looking at having capital improvements programs specifically for sidewalks. So right now, we put in sidewalks as the city when we're doing street reconstruction-type projects. We haven't, with a few exceptions, we haven't gone out and put sidewalks in places where we're not doing street work. So one of the steps after this is to look at capital improvement program specifically for sidewalks, so identifying some of those gap areas where, you know, there's some sidewalks, but there's gaps, or other areas where we know there is a lot of activity. We have done that, as I mentioned, there are some examples where we've done that. It's typically through grants. There is a Safe Routes to School grant program, like I mentioned, that is run through the state, and so there's monies available to build a sidewalk. Rick's Drive, for example, up by Hallam Elementary, we applied for a grant there, we actually didn't get it, but that would have helped us build a sidewalk on the north side of Rick's Drive from, from the school all the way back over into the Paul Ann neighborhood. So we want to continue to do that, but we're also looking at the possibility of a capital improvement program with city funds to help fill some of those gaps as well. That's not part of this today, though.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you, John.
Sure.
I think we're going to open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak, please state your name, an address, or single-member district, and if you could limit your comments to under four minutes. I know that, I know that we've got some that want to speak more than others, and we want to hear everything that you guys have to say, but we'd also like to move through this. So if a point's made, restating it over and over again is maybe not necessary. So let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Please come forward if you wish to speak.
Morning. Rocky Templin. I think we've come a long ways since July of 2018, and so three and a half years, long time coming. I still have some questions about it. I'm not a fan of minor collectors, never have been, never will be.
Rocky, when you say that, what do you mean?
Sidewalks.
You don't want sidewalks on minor collectors?
Sidewalks on minor collectors.
Okay.
They're pretty much throughout, and you have the major collector, which does carry you to the arterial, and so I don't think the minor collectors, from the past 40 years, pretty much stuck on the 1959 ordinance, which I thought made sense. The smaller the street, needed sidewalks, the danger it was to walk. The wider streets, the safer it was to walk. You can go out any time, my people drive to my subdivision, park, and get out and walk. That's how safe they feel from other parts of town. And so it'll just cause complications for me as a developer. Slim chance, I'll have to just annex it as ranch and estate and do lots where I don't have to do sidewalks. Some of the topography is going to prohibit me from doing sidewalks, make it too expensive to be even to do. And then on the other case, then what it may be is I may want to go back and try to change where my local streets are minimum width to 26 feet, and I don't have to do sidewalks. So instead of a 40-foot street where everybody enjoys parking and walking, now I'm going to have a 26-foot street where people are going to park on both sides and not have to have a sidewalk, because the sidewalks aren't on local streets. So, thank you.
So Rocky, you're opposed to narrowing the streets. Correct. You'd rather keep them wide with no sidewalks.
I'd rather keep them wide or with no sidewalks.
Correct. Okay.
And of course, I'm not a fan of larger right-of-ways. That's just more the people have to maintain. You give the utilities carte blanche, where they can just spread the utilities out over 20 feet instead of five feet. As everybody's seen in San Angelo right now, Frontier, they've just gone through and bored everything and got out of the right-of-way in most cases, and they're in those easements, which I guess they can still do, but just causing problems.
Thank you.
Morning, folks. My name's Tony Jones. I'm a developer and builder here. And so the difference we have, the difference we've worked our way down to, and John's only been here about three years or four, but we've been dealing with this for 15, 20 years. We, the city, staff, businessmen, the city's been dealing with this for a long, long time, and so we're grateful that the city invited us to be a participant in this process. A lot of us have been here a long time and kind of know what things look like after 10 or 15 or 20 years. And so this minor collector, local street, at the end of the day, it would be really hard for you to drive anywhere throughout San Angelo and see the difference between those two. Okay? So it gets down to a labeling thing, all right? We can try to predict where traffic is going to flow, but at the end of the day, I think everybody would agree it's a guessing game. Some of it's obvious, most of it is not. So what we get down to really is the crux of the problem, in my opinion, and that is, can San Angelo, A, afford these sidewalks, and B, come up with some solution for maintaining them? You have to look no further than East Harris over here, three or four blocks. Those sidewalks are put in, and God bless. Those sidewalks were put in in, God knows, the 20s, the 30s, East Harris, Cohenheim, all these streets over here just within blocks of the city. Our beloved Santa Rita, initially, most of those homes had sidewalks. And today, you see where all of that is. Those sidewalks are virtually gone. People quit using sidewalks when we began to be able to afford automobiles and general transportation. And so, what, what you're asking, what you're asking a developer to do, when you tell him he needs to come in on these minor collectors, oh sure, you can narrow the street, we're going to want you to put in a sidewalk, you can narrow the street, but you're working against yourself because you say there's more traffic on this street. Yes, you're, but yet, in order to get a sidewalk, we're going to let you make it narrower. So that's a bit incongruent, as far as I'm concerned. And then there's the ugly little fact that along these streets, these minor collectors and/or local streets, they look kind of the same, remember? Technically, they're kind of the same in terms of width, all of that good stuff. They're right next to each other, the label is just different, and we're assuming all this traffic is going to flow down these streets. And so, the ugly little secret is, after these sidewalks go in, these people initially are going to pay anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 more for their home because of the sidewalks. I know staff's estimate is much, much lower than that, but we know a little bit about, from a historical standpoint, their ability to estimate. Hadn't always been stellar. Typically, things cost more than they estimate they're going to. And so, the true cost of a sidewalk in front of a 70-foot house, if I'm not bundling it up with paving and curbing and all of this other stuff, so that Reese Albert can say, oh, your sidewalks are just costing you this much, well, the cost is over here in the larger project. And so, it, there is no money-saving by going to minor, you know, narrower streets. But back to the ugly little secret, you know, in five years or so, after a tree grows and breaks one of these sidewalks, it will be up to the homeowner to repair or replace to the city specs that sidewalk. What if that little homeowner can't afford it? And a lot of them can. And moving forward with current situation, less of them will be able to, A, qualify or B, make the payments, let alone replace a $3,000 or $4,000 sidewalk, $5,000. And so, what's, what's the recourse then? What's the recourse then? The city will basically come out and fix it for you, just like they'll mow your lot for you when your weeds get too tall, but then they're going to send you a bill. If you can't pay for the sidewalk replacement, repair, they'll just file a lien on your property. That's the city's only recourse in order to get its money, be able to get its money. And so, I contend, I have that San Angelo is a safe pedestrian city, probably safer than most, due to the width of our streets, has nothing to do with whether or not we have sidewalks. The very plan that was done, the MPO, the APO, whichever, whatever it was, that John used to say, revealed a need for sidewalks from history for the past five or six or seven years or 10 years. He said it revealed that we absolutely need sidewalks on all these new little streets. Okay? Well, when you look at pedestrian accidents in San Angelo, Texas, virtually none of them are, are happening in residential subdivisions. The majority of them, any one of us can guess, anybody in this audience can guess where those pedestrian accidents are. And they're not in the, they are not in the residential subdivisions. Again, folks that come to San Angelo love the wider streets, they love the ability to be able to park a car in front of their home. And if I go to a 28-foot street and put your beloved sidewalk in, John, there won't be parking on both sides of a street in front of homes, because you can't get a fire truck and, and opposing traffic down that street anymore. Oh, you can, but with inches to spare. And so, what's the long-term cost of that going to be? You know? So I just don't think that these minor collectors need to be a part of this sidewalk scenario. I have no doubt that there would be situations in the future that would come up that common sense would dictate there needs to be a sidewalk on this stretch of street regardless of the width or what it's named. Common sense dictates that. And so, we're just asking for your consideration in your proposal to the council, and we appreciate what you all do.
Thanks, Tony. Let's, can you pull up the, the widths, the road widths, please? Yeah, the pavement widths. So these are the proposed changes to the pavement widths?
Yes.
Is that correct?
And I will say, I know a couple of-
These are standard widths?
Yes.
Okay.
For brand-new. Do you want to see the others, or is this the one you wanted to?
I think this is the one we need to be looking at.
Okay.
The, the minor or the minimums are as it relates to existing roads, and there's really nothing we can do.
That's right.
I mean, I guess we could raise the, the minimum width, but once the roads end, it's, I, I think it's hard to justify a jog in the street to widen in front of a home that's being built or remodeled or whatever the reason is. So to me, this is-
And I will say, we've, we've recommended these street widths. I know early on, we talked about, we were comfortable narrowing the streets because you would have sidewalks.
Right.
And, and I believe, I don't want to speak for them, but I, my understanding from the Development Task Force was they were all comfortable with these widths. What we had originally proposed is to go even narrower, like for local streets, for example, if you put a sidewalk on it. But since we've recommended not including sidewalks on local streets, we stuck with the 36 instead of going narrower. So I, and, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think anybody's suggesting keeping the, the current 40.
Well, let's, let's ask. What, what does the task force say about these, these widths? You want to leave them like they are?
Yeah, like a 40-foot street without sidewalks, that's what I'm going to do.
Okay.
Do it at 36 feet.
And a 50-foot minor collector is okay with you guys?
If I could clarify that, I mean, I, the, this ordinance gets rid of the either-or. This would allow you to do a 36-foot street with no sidewalk. You could always build a 40, I mean, you could go out and build an 80-foot wide street if you wanted to, so a developer can build it wider-
No, but we're setting, we're setting the minimum width-
Correct.
Of a new road.
So this would say, in a local neighborhood, you don't have to build a sidewalk, but you could build a 36-foot width street. It's not, you know, the current ordinance says 40 or 36 with a sidewalk.
Right.
This gets rid of that distinction and just says, the minimum's now 36, whether or not there's a sidewalk. Does that make sense? So I, I want to go back to Rocky, if you're okay, are you okay with a minimum of 36 for local streets, even without a sidewalk?
Or are you okay with 40 with no sidewalk?
Right.
I mean, I-
If you're going on the rightaway, I'm going to have a 50-foot rightaway, I'm probably still going to put in a 40-foot street. If that's five foot less, the homeowner has to maintain, if five foot more, the city has to maintain. We have to go to the light police, clear the streets, we get on the 40.
Thank you. Okay.
Well, and, and so let me add just what I said a second ago, that i- if Rocky wants to put in a 40-foot wide street, he can, he can do that, uh, under the day's ordinance or under this ordinance.
I completely understand.
We're talking about a minimum.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. Russell, I'm sorry.
Russell Gully, single-member district four. And I think John clarified it pretty well, that this is a minimum for the street width. And, and there's some cases, because San Angelo's a, a surface street drainage town to a large degree, and in some cases, for the drainage capacity, it may be advisable or needed for, for a 40-foot street because, to control and limit the depth of drainage. So there are cases. And since these are minimums, yes, a 40-foot street, if the developer wants to do that, great. Because what we have on the agenda coming up and some, some later items is a developer who is wanting to do these narrower streets, the 37, 36-foot streets. And, and so, leaving it this, as, or approving it as proposed gives flexibility, we believe, for everybody, for Rocky to do what Rocky wants to do and for other developers that may have shorter streets, less traffic, different kind of plans in mind to be able to do this. So, so really, at the end of the day, I think the, the crux is, is the sidewalks on these minor collectors in single-family residential. I believe the minor collectors in, in commercial, those are going to go in as part of the commercial. So it's really just sidewalks on minor collectors in single-family zoned areas, and, and that's what, where the development community, the builders are saying, if we want to put sidewalks, let it be our decision, a market-driven decision and not mandated by ordinance. So, thank you for, for your hearing of this. And, and we believe, we, we did sit down with, with staff and worked through and, and got it nailed down, we believe, to, and eliminated a lot of grayness, and Brandon read through it and, and looked through it. So we, we believe, as good as we see it today, we believe we have a, a good ordinance that it is, the, the best we could kind of put together for an ordinance. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Gary Cortez. I build out in the Paul Ann area, I don't know what district I live in, one of them. Is everybody tired of sidewalks? Tired of hearing about them? We continue this on. You know, Tony brought up that MPO report, and that was kind of what I was hanging my hat on, that I'd get up here and say, have y'all read the MPO report on minor collector streets? And they've been relatively safe through the years, there's been minimal accidents on the minor collector. And so, to just make it simple, I'm against it. I'm against putting sidewalks on the minor collector streets. I'm glad we've got the local streets issues taken care of, and the minor collector is the, is the main issue. What scares me is that down the road, that, how we start reclassifying streets, and this would be a moving target, well, let's classify a local street, you know, let's change that definition, and we'll be back here again, fighting this again, over and over, like we have for the last 20 years. Let's, let's start to leave the minor collectors off and the local streets, and leave everything else the way it is. And as it's moving on and people get used to putting sidewalks in and that scary thing gets out of the way, we, you know, it's, we're moving, it's going to be a moving target. And, but let's start, let's start easy and move into it. Markets, interest rates are going to go up, we all know that. Market's going to slow down. And, you know, let's take it, let somebody else take care of this down the road. Let's just deal with what we have now, leave the minor collectors off, and let's move on to something else. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? All right, I'm going to close public comment. How many lanes can we get in a 62-foot wide road? Do we need to be changing the widths of the, of the roads that are not part of our discussion for sidewalks?
Mitchell Gatlin, engineering. Normally, on a 60-foot wide road, you're probably looking at, depending on the configuration, more often than not, on an arterial, you're going to have your two lanes of traffic and then a middle turn lane.
Okay. For a major arterial?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, with the minor arterial, you basically just take off that center turn lane, just have your wider driving lanes.
So, Nickerbacher is a major arterial, I'm assuming?
Yes.
How wide is it?
It being a text dot roadway, it's hard to say. Yeah, it's, it's, it's over 62 feet, 64 feet wide. It's probably closer to, I would say, 70 to 80 feet wide.
And again, this is the minimum that would be required for a new street. Obviously, we can build them wider like Nickerbacher if, if the traffic warrants it.
Okay.
This is the developer's responsibility in this case.
Okay. Thank you, Mitchell. Anyone have thoughts that they'd like to share on these ordinances, or?
I'm, I'm happy with what they've come up with. I'm, I'm happy that we've worked together to come up with something productive. I don't, I think it's a consensus that they don't want sidewalks on the minor collectors.
Right.
Which, I don't have a problem with that, I don't guess, I mean, but I'm, I'm, I'm really excited and happy that they've worked together and come up with a, a game plan for both, which seems like most people are happy with and can work with.
So, right now, the, the difference between major and minor collector streets is what it empties into, basically, right? I mean, major collector empties into an arterial and minor collector empties into a major collector. Is that right?
Mostly, yeah. I mean, it, part of its, part of its traffic generation, so, you know, a major collector could go right into a major arterial, it doesn't, you know, it's not strictly a, a kind of a tree that one feeds into the other. Yeah, it's, it's largely a discussion of traffic.
The street width is the same, I guess that was my point, right now, it's 50 and 50, is that right? The pavement width?
Yes.
Yes.
What this chart says.
Yes. Yeah, and so, sort of as they were alluding to, the, the minor collectors tend to be more in the neighborhoods versus major collectors are kind of at the edge of neighborhoods. And so, that's, that's why we wanted to keep the major ones wider, but it make, made sense to reduce the minor collectors, because they tend to be in the neighborhoods, and there's no need to have them, those are rarely needing to be like a four-lane road, which the, the larger width would allow. Minor collectors would be more like a three-lane, you know, two-lane and a turn lane or parking.
Do you know that slide that outlines the streets?
The map?
Like the examples?
Yeah, no, the actual names. You had one slide that had it, like, Green Meadow.
Examples?
That was under the sidewalks. Oh, did I miss it?
Fair.
That was it. Going too fast.
Okay. Thank you.
How wide is Soul Ross?
Yeah.
I'm sure it's not the width, it's not the standard width.
I cannot imagine walking down Soul Ross, even though the speed limit's 25. I, the only, the only concern I have, if we're taking sidewalks out of the development equation in neighborhoods, is just having adequate widths on the roads to allow people to use the roads to walk and not, and not be at risk of getting hit by a car. And it's not necessarily the, the one person that's walking in the neighborhood, it's the people that have a couple of kids on bikes or a couple of dogs. So, that's my, that's my primary concern. And if you guys think 36 feet is wide enough, then, and 40 feet, was 40 feet minor collectors?
40 foot was, yeah.
If we put a car on either side of the street on a 40-foot road, how much room does that leave for cars to pass through?
That's, I mean, that's still plenty. That would leave 24, 24 feet, so two 12-foot lanes, which is wide for a lane. I mean, that's, that's a standard highway lane, is 12 feet.
Okay. All right?
Just a note, we do need two separate motions, one on the sidewalk ordinance and one on the street widths.
Okay. You guys comfortable moving forward? Do you have any other questions? Someone want to make a motion? You ready to finalize this?
I will make a motion as far as omitting minor collectors from being required to have sidewalks.
Okay.
So that's approval of the ordinance as written.
to have them, those are rarely needing to be like a four-lane road, which the larger width would allow. Minor collectors would be more like a three-lane, you know, two-lane and a turn lane or parking. The map?
Like the examples?
Yeah, the actual names. You had one slide that had it, like, Green Meadow.
Examples?
That was under the sidewalks. Oh, did I miss it?
There.
That was it. Going too fast.
Okay, thank you.
How wide is Soul Ross?
Yeah.
I'm sure it's not the width, it's not the standard width.
I cannot imagine walking down Soul Ross, even though the speed limit's 25. The only concern I have, if we're taking sidewalks out of the development equation in neighborhoods, is just having adequate widths on the roads to allow people to use the roads to walk and not be at risk of getting hit by a car. And it's not necessarily the one person that's walking in the neighborhood, it's the people that have a couple of kids on bikes or a couple of dogs. So, that's my, that's my primary concern. And if you guys think 36 feet is wide enough, then 40 feet, was 40 feet minor collectors?
40 foot was, yeah.
If we put a car on either side of the street on a 40-foot road, how much room does that leave for cars to pass through?
That's, I mean, that's still plenty. That would leave 24, 24 feet, so two 12-foot lanes, which is wide for a lane. I mean, that's, that's a standard highway lane, is 12 feet.
Okay. All right.
Just a note, we do need two separate motions, one on the sidewalk ordinance and one on the street widths.
Okay. You guys comfortable moving forward? Do you have any other questions? Someone want to make a motion? You ready to finalize this?
I will make a motion as far as omitting minor collectors from being required to have sidewalks.
Okay.
So that's approval of the ordinance as written with, I mean, with the removal of minor collectors.
Correct.
I'm sorry, Brittany, I need to clarify.
Yeah, me too.
Are you proposing that we approve the sidewalk ordinance and?
No.
Or do you want to simply?
I am fine with the ordinance, the way it was presented, other than I am voting against having sidewalks on minor collectors.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. So on item A, let me go back here. So this is 5A under text amendments. As it relates to the sidewalk ordinance, we have a motion to approve as presented by the staff and to designate no sidewalk requirement on minor collectors. We have a motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the sidewalk ordinance as presented and designate minor collectors to not require sidewalks. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
5-1. All right. And item B, road widths. Anyone wish to make a motion on the changes to the road width requirements?
I get that it's a, that it's a minimum. I'm still struggling with the 10-foot reduction in pavement width on minor collectors if we're not going to require sidewalks.
It's a lot.
Can we open it back up and see? I mean, because I know Rocky had mentioned that he was fine with it, but see what other developers feel.
Going to open it up for public comment?
Rocky Tumpin. As mentioned earlier, if you drive the subdivision, Prestonwood, for example, you're not going to notice a difference between a minor collector and a local street. My local streets are 40-foot and there are vehicles parked on both sides of the street. And a lot of them, there are front-entry driveways and there's vehicles in the driveways. And the same thing on the minor collector, which I have that goes through there, there are vehicles parked on both sides. So you don't really notice the difference now, so I don't know that you're going to notice the difference if I choose to, which I don't have to, to do a 40-foot on a minor collector. I don't know that I would change, that just depends on the circumstances in the subdivision. As y'all see with existing streets all the time, I would assume you don't like streets going from 50-foot to 36-foot in a given block, because that's just, that's just dangerous. And so, it would have to be a taper over a block or so. But I don't think you're going to see the difference in a minor collector versus a local street, both being at 40 feet. There's still vehicle on each side and there's still approximately 24 feet in the middle for traffic to cross.
What's the current requirement for local streets? 40?
Brand-new 40 feet, or you can do down to 36 if you have a sidewalk.
With a sidewalk.
Is the current standard.
I'd like to see local streets stay at 40 feet, personally. Minor collectors, I don't know. It's, there's more traffic, generally speaking, on those roads. That's the intent. I understand that development patterns dictate the traffic that goes through some of these roads, so. I don't, 40 feet for a minor collector seems pretty narrow, personally speaking.
I would just note that major collectors are being reduced to 48, so we probably wouldn't want to keep minor collector at 50 unless we also increase major collector, but we could, we could put it back up to 48 if that's, if you're wanting to keep it wider.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Jones?
Tony Jones, just a simple question. We had a vote, 5 to 1.
Yes, sir.
And so, will that not be the recommendation to the council?
For sidewalks, yes. Not as it relates to road widths.
All right. We're voting on each separately. And if you're leaning towards keeping locals at 40, I would suggest leaving in the option that's in our current ordinance that would allow a developer to go down to 36 if they do sidewalks. Because if we just change it to 40, even if a developer chooses to put in a sidewalk, they would still have to do 40, unless we add back in that provision that gives them the either-or.
Okay.
Russell Gully, single-member district four. The local streets, 36, 40 feet, there are a lot of, kind of, I'm going to call them middle-aged streets and streets in town, and we bring them to you that are 36, 37-feet-wide streets that really, we believe they function well. You know, if you park cars, you know, a car is maybe seven feet wide and if they're supposed to be 18-inch off the curb, you know, maybe they take up 10 feet either side. So, if you've got 10 and 10 and 20 feet, you know, sure, it narrows it down, but if it's going to narrow it too much from 40 feet almost, is it going to narrow it too much from 36 feet? And, you know, and maybe to some degree, that even functions to slow down traffic. If I'm a driver and it's a little narrower and things are closer in, I'm going to tend to slow down and maybe create a little safer environment and not have a big, wide-open corridor to race down.
I wish that everyone in this community drove like you, Mr. Gully.
My driving habits have changed, I must admit, as I age. And listen to different music, too. But anyway, you know, the minor collectors, you know, because the sidewalks, you know, a major collector now is going to have sidewalks on them. And so, maybe the minor collectors, and I don't know how much we want to add in there, if, maybe if you do sidewalks, maybe you could have a minor collector at 40 feet and let the people be out there. Or if you don't have sidewalks, as in some of these single-family residential areas, maybe you bump it back out to 48 or 50 feet. So maybe how we used to give the option for sidewalks on local streets and let them be narrower, maybe that could be an option if you're concerned about these narrower minor collectors. Let's maybe give an option on those, that if you do sidewalks on your minor collector, you could go to a narrow one, and that would give people that flexibility to kind of do what, how they want to style their subdivision.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. I don't think I have any issue with major arterial, minor arterial, and major collectors. There's sidewalks on those roads that are required, so if the city wants to narrow the pavement widths of those roads, I don't think I have an objection. Because we're putting pedestrian traffic on minor collectors and local streets on the pavement, I would, I would like to see wider roads to accommodate the traffic and make it a little bit safer.
Or at least give the option, similar to what local streets are now, I think, or for me personally.
Yeah. A sidewalk or?
Yeah, like local streets currently 36 with a sidewalk or 40 without. That's how it's basically written now.
Yes, yeah. And if that's the way you're leaning, I would recommend on minor collectors.
48 or?
48. Or if you build a sidewalk, you can go down to 40.
Okay.
Okay.
And I know we try to designate these roads, but just like Soul Ross got brought up, it's a minor collector. Was it originally a minor collector?
I don't know.
Probably not. As the evolution of the city, it became one.
Right.
And traffic.
That's right.
So that's also kind of a, we can argue this.
Well, so, I mean, in the subdivision ordinance, a major collector street is any street which collects traffic from residential or local streets and discharges into an arterial street.
Gotcha.
A minor collector is any street which serves primarily to collect traffic from residential or local streets and discharges into a major collector street. So minor feeds major and major feeds arterial. It connects the neighborhood to the major streets around it or other destination.
Are a lot of our local streets narrower? I know you said you did the ArcGIS and you came up with this would fit a lot of our, so that maybe we would eliminate as well coming back for.
That's where that minimum.
Variations.
Yeah, again, I haven't heard anybody suggest changes to the minimum for existing, redevelopment on existing streets, which would accommodate down to 30 feet, which.
Okay.
I mean, there's really, there's nothing you can do. But go to Santa Rita, go to this area around downtown that has these old sidewalks that are falling apart. What's in is in.
Yeah.
We can't widen the roads in front of those.
I'm just saying it eliminates some of the coming back for a.
Yes.
Yeah.
Coming before us.
And just so you know, 91% of existing streets in the city are 30 feet or wider. So that would only leave 8% of the streets that would either have to widen their road or seek a variance.
Right.
I think, I think I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Anyone want to make a motion?
Move to approve the street width, text amendments with the following conditions, that we change in the proposal, local streets, minimum pavement width of 40 feet or 36 feet with a sidewalk, and minor collectors to 48 feet or 40 with a sidewalk.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion?
I'll second.
And we have a second. So the motion is to approve the reduction in road widths for major arterial, minor arterial, major collector, as proposed by the staff. Minor collectors will have a minimum width of 48 feet or 40 feet with a sidewalk. Local streets, 40 feet minimum or 36 feet with a sidewalk. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Can we get a show of hands for the opposed?
14. All right. I think that's it on text amendments. The next item on the regular agenda is subdivision plaits. The planning commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the city council. Paulan Park, section 14A, request for approval of a final plat of Paulan Park, section 14A being 3.354 acres northwest of McGill Boulevard and Gordon Boulevard. Do I need to read all of the Paulan in here? There's one, two, three, four, five?
I believe so, and we'll do one presentation.
Okay. Item B, FP 22-02, Paulan Park, section 14B, request for approval of a final plat of Paulan Park, section 14B being 3.441 acres northwest of McGill Boulevard and Gordon Boulevard. Item C, FP 22-03, Paulan Park, section 14C, request for approval of final plat of Paulan Park, section 14C, being 4.169 acres northwest of McGill Boulevard and Gordon Boulevard. Item D, FP 22-04, Paulan Park, section 14D, request for approval of final plat of Paulan Park, section 14D, being 5.003 acres located northwest of McGill Boulevard and Gordon Boulevard. And item E, FP 22-05, Paulan Park, section 14E, request for approval of final plat of Paulan Park, section 14E, being 4.728 acres located northwest of McGill Boulevard and Gordon Boulevard.
Okay. Thank you, planning commissioners. Jeff Fisher, chief planner. So there's five plaits in the same area, so we're going to do one presentation and move forward on these quickly. Total acreage is 20.696 acres. The zoning of these lots are RS1, and it's to the north of McGill and the Gregory intersection in Lucy Gonzalez's District Four in the Paulan neighborhood. So all of these are going to be new streets, so based on what you all are recommending, they want to do a 36-foot-wide street, streets in each of the subdivisions. So since they're new streets and you all wanted the 40 or the 36 with a four-foot sidewalk, our recommendation will be to deny the variances based on that decision. Here's 14A, so this is going from east to west. McGill Boulevard is on the bottom, so all of these lots will come off of McGill, very close to Paulan Baptist Church. And then there's B, C, some of these names, Courage Lane, Zeus Lane, Gregory Drive, Valerie Lane, and then 14A is Gregory Drive and Courage Lane. So all of the new streets would request variances down to 36 feet of pavement instead of the existing 40. So our rationale, we believe that this is an undeveloped property with relative flat topography, so there's not, again, based on the decision this morning, we don't see any reason to support the variance. It would set a negative precedent if we're staying at 40 feet. There wouldn't be any hardship in this case. We've required the same widths all along. And then I guess it would, yeah, it would go against the city ordinance as there's no existing special circumstances in this case. So staff recommends approval of all of the plaits, 14A to 14E, and to deny the requested street width variances, subject to the six conditions of approval for each one. So I'll just go over these really quick. No delinquent taxes, drainage studies required, submit plans for sewer main and service connections, submit plans for a water main and water connections, submit plans for construction of the street pavement. And then prior to plat recordation, to note on the plat, temporary turnaround should be installed on any den and roadway exceeding 750 feet until the new roadway is connected with other existing streets. There was a preliminary plat for this area, just FYI, and all of these lots generally conform. So this concludes staff's presentation, and we open it up for your comments.
Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Sure.
Going to open it up for public comment?
Good morning, Russell Gully with SKG. Well, that previous vote went a little different than I thought it would on street width, so I've got to retool my thinking here on that. So really, and there's some streets in this neighborhood that are currently 36 feet wide. A lot of these streets that come off are 400 feet in length, so they're really short streets. So we were just thinking this would kind of, you know, smaller lots, shorter streets, 36-foot-wide streets could be appropriate here. We understand the thinking behind the little bit wider street. So we were really just trying to, we were thinking that we would get the new street standards to 36 feet, and so the developer was trying to move forward and kind of be ahead of all of the curves and approvals through city council, so we were just wanting to go that route and get that behind us. So wish you would approve it, that would be helpful for the. That would be helpful for this. If not, we understand why. But maybe we wanted a minimum revised the condition to allow for the 36 feet and a sidewalk because as written, it's only 40 feet. So I would be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, sir. Any questions for Mr. Gully? Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? For these cases? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Anyone wish to make a motion or have questions? Share their thoughts?
Is there a second question?
Yeah. It's fairly standard, so drainage study and then extend the water and sewer from McGill.
I was just double checking with the.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone want to make a motion? Anyone?
I'll make a motion that we approve the staff's recommendation to approve the final plaits and to deny the 36 width so that we can stay on track with our new street widths.
Okay. But we would allow a 36-foot width if they installed a sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve, as presented by the staff, requiring a 40-foot pavement width or 36-foot pavement width with a sidewalk. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Six zero. All right, item F, RP 22-01, first replat of lots 15 and 16, block 10, Ellis Edition. Request for approval of the first replat of lots 15 and 16, block 10, Ellis Edition, located northwest of Coburland Street and North Pope Street, being 0.44 acres.
Good morning, Rafael Alvarado, Planning Development Services. This is the first replat of lots 15 and 16, block 10, and Ellis Edition, measuring 0.44 acres at the intersection of Coburland and North Pope Street, the property on the northwest corner. It is District 3, Harry Thomas, in the Fort East Concho, or Fort Concho East neighborhood. On the left, you have a satellite image of the site. There were 22 notifications mailed out, zero returned in opposition, one returned in favor. It is the parcel with the red star on it. The vision plan and zone district maps for the parcel, or for the replat or neighborhood, and RS2, two-family residential. This is the proposed replat. And I'll go back to the satellite image. First, I should mention that staff is recommending approval, and in its approval, we're recommending the construction of a sidewalk along Coburland and Pope Street. As you can tell, it is fairly close to San Jacinto Elementary School. It is closer than 500 feet, and there is an existing sidewalk network all along Coburland. This property being the only one along that northern side of the street that doesn't have a sidewalk. And Pope Street, I believe the property across the street has a sidewalk, but neither of the two properties to the north of the alleyway along Pope Street have sidewalks. Oh, wrong way.
I hit the interrupt. On, in my question, um, to be clearly, in one of the previous presentations on sidewalks, if it was, I thought it got changed for churches and schools from 500 feet to 300. Is that, am I incorrect?
That is correct.
Okay.
How close is this lot to the school?
I measured it, and it was definitely under 500 feet. I think it was like 470.
So therefore it wouldn't require.
Okay.
And the reason for that being that, I guess, prior to today, the city was, is allowed to recommend sidewalk construction along areas in need, particularly those in a school route. So staff is recommending approval of RP 22-01 with six conditions of approval, the first being the tax certificate, next being that construction of a sidewalk be done on Coburland Street, the same for North Pope Street. Next is the fire hydrant note. The fifth condition is installation of a sewer main, and the sixth condition is installation of a water service line, as needed. I'll go back to the plat.
Okay. Anyone have questions for the staff? So the staff is requiring sidewalks along Coburland and Pope Streets. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you even know, again, the standard change is 300 feet from the school? So I understand Coburland, but Pope isn't, that would be considered a.
Are there any existing sidewalks on Pope Street?
Only across the street.
Across the street.
Directly across the street.
Okay.
I think the short answer to that is we're currently working on the current ordinance, and so.
Yes, sir.
You're correct, under the new ordinance, that it would not require sidewalks. So if that plays a role in your decision, that could be a factor.
Okay. Thank you.
And then is there, are there sidewalks on both sides of Coburland, or just?
On both sides of Coburland, yes, that's right.
Okay. Thank you, Rafael. I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Russell Gully with SKG Engineering, and I think Mr. James just answered the question, based on the proposed sidewalk ordinance as written, they would not be required at this location because of its distance from the school?
I believe that's true on, is it Pope?
On Coburland, for sure.
Well, I think that's true on Pope because the distance is too far, if I remember correctly. And maybe we can pull up the map, but I believe Coburland has sidewalks in place already on that block, and so this would.
Yeah.
Basically complete that gap to the corner. So under the new ordinance, I think it would still require it. It's kind of hard to see there, but you can kind of see the sidewalk on the lots.
You can see it.
It looks like it goes all the way to the corner at Emerson, and so this is, in fact, I think there's a partial sidewalk on this lot if I, maybe I'm thinking of a different case, but. Oh, it is. Okay. And Aaron just clarified, Coburland is a minor arterial as well, so that would trigger the sidewalk anyway. But there is an existing sidewalk on that block.
Okay.
75% of the block, it looks like.
So for Coburland, it would require, because it's arterial, but Pope Street?
No.
No. Okay. So that would be.
Unless it's within 300 feet.
And it's not. Spalding is 100-foot right of way. Those half blocks are 190 feet plus a 20-foot alley, so it's 310. So it's over the 300 foot.
So based on the changes that were previously presented in the sidewalk ordinance, Russell, what would your new proposal be?
Our request would be just, and I don't, I guess it really wouldn't be a variance. I guess our request would be not to have to do the sidewalk on Pope Street, but understanding because of the classification of Coburland, we would, it would be necessary to do it on Coburland. So we would do Coburland, but ask for the, ask not to do it on Pope Street.
Thank you.
Okay.
Would be happy to answer any other questions. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this case? Please come forward. All right, I'm going to close public comment. Excuse me.
I will note that there is an existing sidewalk on the lot to the north of this subject lot.
On Pope Street?
Yeah. And it's hard to tell. It looks like there may be a sidewalk, at least part of the way to Spalding, and you can kind of see it there. It's really hard to see, but about halfway up Spalding, so I think at this point, you know, you can see the sidewalk at the school, given that Coburland has sidewalks and there's sidewalks at the school, and partially sidewalks on Pope, I think we would still recommend the sidewalk as connectivity to the school. And I believe that would apply under the proposed new ordinance as well because of the extent of sidewalks on that block already.
Okay.
I would inquire what the condition of, just based on the neighborhood age, what the condition of the sidewalks actually are on Pope leading to the elementary school.
I don't know if we have photos of that. It's, you know, obviously, we can't tell from the aerial, but.
I don't have any pictures.
I would assume that they're probably deteriorated.
What is the distance from that lot to the school?
They measure the distance between a lot and the school, or they're measuring it from the frontmost point or the alley?
I don't either.
There is no sidewalk on the west side of Pope, north of the alley, between the alley and Spalding. There is a newer sidewalk, I guess the school district built, on the east side of Pope, between the alley and Spalding. Yes, sir.
Where the parking lot is.
But not on, not on.
The subject property side.
The west side, same side, so there is no connecting sidewalk between the alley and Spalding.
Okay. Thank you, Russell.
I think this one is, oh, sorry. I think this one is one that's, it's kind of in a gray area. If we had the new ordinance in place, obviously, we would have better researched what sidewalks are there, what condition. Like I said, it's hard to tell if there's a sidewalk north of there, so it's very likely that there's not more than 50% on that block, just looking at it again. And so, I mean, it's really up to you all, but it would be a judgment call, even under the new ordinance.
Do you have a quick question? When you're actually measuring distance between, and I'm not going to lie, I haven't read through our binder of information to see if it's in there, but when you're measuring distance between a subject property and a school or a church, is it measured from the frontmost point? Like, for instance, like, you know, the property front door would be facing south, you know, if the school's north, are you measuring from Coburland? Are you measuring from the alley? Like, where exactly is the point that we can figure out?
It would be the closest part of the lot that the school sits on to the closest part of the subject lot.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
We just checked it using GIS, and it came out to about 415, 415 feet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Can I make a motion?
Oh, yes, I've closed public comment, I believe, so yes, we take a motion.
Okay. I will make a motion to have sidewalks on Coburland, but not on Pope.
Okay. We have a motion to approve with a sidewalk on Coburland, no sidewalk on Pope. Do we have a second?
Sir.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve, as presented, with a sidewalk on Coburland, not on Pope. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Six zero. Riverview Estates, RP 22-02, request for approval of Riverview Estates, being a replat of tract A, Park Place Edition, 14.53 acres southwest of South Concho Park Drive and South Bell Street.
This is RP 22-02. The proposed area is 14.53 acres. It is west of Riverside Avenue and Todd Lane. It is in District 3, Harry Thomas, in the Glenmore neighborhood. So the left is the satellite image of the site. The future land use and zone district maps are neighborhood, and the current zoning is RM1, low-rise multifamily residential. This is the proposed replat. So staff is recommending for the planning, approval of RP 22-02, a residential replat of Park Place, Lot A, located west of Riverside Avenue and Todd Lane, subject to 12 conditions of approval. The first is the tax certificate. Next would be a requirement to put, install a four-foot maintenance easement, and this is required since the lots that are being planted are zero lot line homes. The home would have essentially a minimal side yard on one side, and it would require a maintenance easement on the other side of the home. The next, the third condition is that required construction of Cannonball Run. A similar condition is, the same condition really, for Riverview Run, for Toby Lane, and for West Riverside Avenue. The seventh condition is to require improvements to South Concho Park Drive. The eighth condition is a drainage study. The ninth condition is approve, submit plans for a water main. The tenth condition is installation of a sewer main. The eleventh condition is the fire note. And the last condition is to rename Toby Lane, since Toby Lane is already in use, and the street in the replat is not continuous with the existing Toby Lane, so it creates 911 addressing issues. And Toby Lane here, I think, is. Well, this is South Concho Park Drive. That's the one that's requiring improvements due to it being under the current minimum standard, and Toby Lane is right here. And I believe that the existing Toby Lane runs to the east of that.
Anyone have questions for the staff? You mentioned that these are zero lot line homes. What are the, what are the widths and depths of these lots?
I believe they're 45 feet wide, and these lots were longer than the minimum requirement. I don't remember the exact measurement, but it, I think the minimum in our ordinance is 45 by 100.
And I'm assuming that this density is allowed because of the underlying zoning.
That's correct.
It's multifamily. Okay. Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Rafael. We open it up for public comment.
Carson Stevens, CFE. I'm here if y'all have any questions.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Stevens? Thank you, sir.
Mitchell Gatlin, Engineering. Just wanted to clarify a couple of things. On the South Concho Park Drive improvement, that one would actually need to be removed from the plat requirements. There's actually city-owned land that runs in a strip adjacent to that, so this property actually is. There's actually city-owned land that runs in a strip adjacent to that, so this property actually isn't adjacent to that street width. So they would not be required to widen the park road.
Okay, so we go back to the requirements? Item seven?
Item seven, yes, sir.
So strike item seven?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I would also just like to note that a lift station evaluation will be required for sewer connection for this area. And that's it.
Okay. All right. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? Am I closed public comment? Anyone wish to make a motion?
I'll move to accept as presented, striking item seven in the requirements.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented, striking item seven of the staff's recommendations. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Six zero. Item H, RP 22 dash 04, first replat of Lot 2, Lane addition. A request for approval of a first replat of Lot 2, Lane addition being 2.044 acres southwest of Bowie Street and West 29th Street, variances from Chapter 10 3A1 and 10 3A2 of the subdivision ordinance to allow 29th Street to maintain a 60-foot right-of-way and 36-foot paving width, and to allow Bowie to maintain a 52-foot right-of-way and 40-foot paving width, and to allow Oaklawn Boulevard to maintain a 36-foot paving width.
Thank you, Chair Stripling, Planning Commissioners, Jeff Fisher, Chief Planner. Next case today is a first replat of Lot 2, Lane addition. So this approximately two-acre property sat for a very long time with only one house on it. It was owned RS1. So the developer wants to cut it up into a total of eight lots for a residential. And RS1 only needs 5,000 square feet. So this is the proposal. They would subdivide the eight new lots off of the existing home. So the home would stay as Lot 2A in that picture, and then you would have eight new lots. Five of those lots face 29th Street, and then two of them face Oaklawn Street. All of these, total of five variances were requested because all of the streets were deficient. West 29th Street has a deficient right-of-way and paving. Bowie has a deficient right-of-way and paving, and Oaklawn has a deficient paving, but the right-of-way is sufficient. In addition, staff is recommending a sidewalk on West 29th. This is a major arterial road, so that's consistent with the new sidewalk ordinance. So the right-of-way for East 29th Street is deficient. The applicant, instead of dedicating the, so they're short 10 feet. Instead of dedicating 10 feet in a straight line, this street has a very unique curve. And so it's actually dangerous if they were to widen it going in that same direction. So they're proposing a right-of-way dedication of 10 feet at the corner of Oaklawn and East 29th, but that'll taper to reflect the curve in the road. So that's what they're requesting, and engineering and planning staff are in support of that. So let's go quickly to the, each of the variances. This plat conforms with the purpose statements and comprehensive plan. So looking at West 29th first, it is only 36 feet wide. It would normally need to be 64 feet, but it serves more as a local or a collector road and not really an arterial at this point. This is a very unique situation where we wouldn't normally support this, but given the substantial curve in the road and some of the danger, I had a customer lives in the neighborhood, and she also had concerns with that road. So this city could come in in the future with a CIP or another project and realign that road. So really, we, we're okay with the paving width. It functions as a local. It's actually 36 feet wide for about half a mile. So staff's recommendation is to support the, get the right-of-way dedication with that taper. So somewhere it'll be between 5 and 10 feet in total, but keep the paving width at 36. Bowie and Oaklawn are fine. They're a little bit deficient as well, but we're comfortable not requiring the right-of-way. Bowie's got a sidewalk on one side already, and Oaklawn, again, both of these are infill, local. Bowie's a collector, but again, serves as a local, same reason as 29th, and then Oaklawn is, is a local. So we're okay with all the variances, except we do want the, the right-of-way based on that curvature on 29th Street. Last point is on the sidewalk. The yellow lines indicate sidewalks in the area already, so you've got sidewalks on Bowie. I believe that's a minor collector, but it's a pre-existing situation. In this case, we just want it on 29th. We don't, we already have on one side of Bowie anyway. And then 29th is an arterial, so we do anticipate more traffic, more pedestrians walking along there, and that's consistent with the new ordinance. So in summary, approval of a first replat of Lot 2, Lane addition with the 10 conditions outlined in your staff report. Approval of a variance to maintain a 36-foot paving width with curb and gutter for Oaklawn, an urban local street. So that's a pretty straightforward one. And then approval of variances to maintain a 52-foot right-of-way, which will be close to the new standard, and a 40-foot paving width for curb and gutter for Bowie Street and Urban Collector Street. And approval of the 36-foot paving width variance with curb and gutter on West 29th. But we are recommending denial of the right-of-way variance on 29th. We want that additional tapered right-of-way. And then recommend the sidewalk on 29th. Any questions or comments? So we're, out of the five variances, we're supporting four, but we're denying the one on 29th for right-of-way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. We open it up for public comment.
Russell Gully with SKG. We're, we're okay under this proposed layout with the granting the right-of-way on 29th Street. Would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gully. Anyone else have questions or comments? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Six zero. Rezonings. I'm going to read two things in here. City Council has final authority for approval of rezonings. Item A, Z 22 dash 01, South Extension of Appaloosa Trail. A request to zone a property to the low-rise multifamily zoning district in connection with an annexation being 9.508 acres located at the southwest extension of Appaloosa Trail, southwest of Sherwood Way and FM 2288. And then discussion item A, Appaloosa Trail, South Extension Annexation. Presentation of a proposed annexation of an unaddressed 9.508-acre tract of land located southwest of Sherwood Way and FM 2288.
Thank you, Chair Stripling. So we're going to start with the discussion item for the annexation. You do not have to vote on this. This is just for information. This will go to council next month along with the zone change that's going to be heard next. So we just thought the annexation is probably a better segue because that's what triggers the zoning. So the subject property is 9.508 acres. It would be the south extension of Appaloosa Trail. It's in District 6. Once it's annexed, it would be in District 6, Larry Miller, and it would be in the Bonham neighborhood. This is a survey of the property. It's not, nothing's set in stone yet, but the applicant is, has discussed with staff the potential for a multifamily housing. And so the proposed zoning in a few minutes will be the, when I present, will be an RM1. So there's plenty of, of land for that. We are looking at any potential changes to thoroughfares as there are collectors and arterials in that area. So that's part of the annexation discussion, and the second part is the servicing plan. There is water and sewer. I'll let Engineering speak to that, but I believe it stops at the north end of the lot. So there'd have to be a way to connect that down. And as I said, we are having those discussions now between this month and council next month. So that's just a brief presentation of, of what it is. It is located in the immediate area for annexation in the city's comprehensive plan, and it's Desig neighborhood. So that would support the RM1 zoning when this comes into the city. So again, right now, it's unplatted, undeveloped land would be rezoned to RM1, and they are going to need to look at plating as well when this comes into annexation. Possibly doing a preliminary plat since that new lot will be cutting out of what was the much larger surveyed tract. So if anyone has any questions, again, this is just a discussion item to notify you of what's coming to council next month.
I don't think we have any questions.
Okay. And that's just briefly a timeline, so the council meeting would be February 15th, and then the second reading, March 1st, if everything stays as it is. Okay, so I'll move up to the zoning now. So again, I've already presented this, 9.508 acres going to RM1. Future land use as neighborhood proposed as RM1. That's the survey again. Five notices were mailed out. Such a huge chunk of land, so there wasn't really much in the area. And just for proximity purposes, this is immediately west of the Boulevard Apartments. So it's right on the edge of, west, southwest edge of town. There's not really much to see right now. Appaloosa dead ends right there, so it would just be south of, of that. We're, we're definitely in support of this proposal for zoning. The Res Intel study, some of you may be familiar with in 2009. San Angelo has an issue with a kind of middle-range housing. We've got a lot of single-family and the very expensive apartments, but we don't have a lot of the affordable multifamily and duplexes and things like that. So we believe it's consistent with the comprehensive plan in that study. Staff recommends approval of the, pardon me, that should be RM1, of the RM1 zoning district. And that concludes our presentation. Any questions or comments?
Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Mr. Fisher. We open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this case, please state your name and address or single member district.
And I'd just like to add for the, for the record, we did get a letter this morning from Mr. Templin that owns the adjacent property, and he is in support. So there's one, one in support of the request. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close public comment. Anyone want to share thoughts or make a motion?
Jeff, will you just go back to the conditions one more time?
We're looking at just re, the rezoning of this lot.
I was going to say, there, there are no conditions because it's straight zoning. That's okay.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Six zero. Item B, 20, Z 2203, 103 West 14th Street. A request for approval of rezoning from the two-family residential zoning district to the neighborhood commercial zoning district being .23 acres located at 103 and 107 West 14th Street.
All right. Thank you, Chair Stripling. So this is another zoning request today. We did a conditional use a few years back for this church. They are looking at adding a coffee shop that would be, could be potentially independent from the church. So that, it triggers retail sales, zoning required. And so even though the underlying zoning was RS2, in order to allow the church and other potential retail on that site, applicant is recommending rezoning to CN. So this would, this would change the property from two-family residential to neighborhood commercial to allow the existing church and any retail on the property. It's in the neighborhood, future land use, and it's RS2. We received 23 notices, excuse me, were mailed out. We received one letter in support, and one that came in on Friday, opposed. Not sure if the gentleman's here, but I believe he had some concerns about what the potential uses were. And I think he mentioned an animal kennel or a tavern. And just so you know, both of those uses would not be allowed in CN if they were to ever sell the property. So this is just to recognize this existing church to allow a coffee house. This is looking east on 14th Street, so they have fulfilled all their conditions of approval on their conditional use, and the CN would allow the use anyway. So the RM1 zoning is going to be compatible with, excuse me, the CN zoning will be compatible with neighborhood future land use. Not in all cases, but in an area that's highly built up with commercial or other institutional uses. And there is a, we did approve an existing church very close, about two blocks to the west, and a funeral home. So again, this is a fairly mixed area already, so we think the CN is appropriate. Staff recommends approval from RS2 to CN zoning district. Similar to the case last month on Gunner, they will need to do a unity agreement. Staff is preparing that agreement. That'll, since both lots are only 5,000 square feet, the CN requires 6,000. The unity agreement would just tie them together as one lot. So it's a very simple process that staff's working on between now and council and allow them to move forward. This concludes our presentation.
Could you go back to the aerial, please? You mentioned that this was a neighborhood that's in transition. So the zoning looks like it's a single-family all around it, at least. Is that a block, half a block to the west? It's neighborhood center? So could you speak to the, the uses surrounding this site, please?
Yes. I'm going to try to, unfortunately, the map only goes so far. But I think just over, and I think it's like just west of Far Street is where the existing church is that got a conditional use. So churches can have conditional uses inside residential zoning, and then the funeral home was like right next to it. And then it's about a block from Chadburn Street. So I think the fact that the conditional use was already there and we're recognizing it, we think that a, the, the site is too big to really get developed any bigger because they need to have the space for parking. So I'd let, I think the applicants are here. I'll let them speak to it. But I would think the coffee shop would be inside the existing building and wouldn't generate any new building expansion. So I think based on those reasons, staff is in support.
Is there a reason why they want to go to CN and not get a conditional use?
Yes, because the RS2, I believe, would not allow a conditional use for retail. So they, they have to do the rezoning. And the rezoning would allow both uses.
Got it.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for the staff? We open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this case, please state your name and address or single member district.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Clifford Kerr, and I live at 109 West 14th Street. And I acquired this property on October 29th of 2019. And at that time, I was relocating 1,400 miles away from Ohio down to San Angelo to be with my son and his family. I looked hard and long for a, a very nice home, and it didn't have to be large, but small. And I did find that at this residence. The home adjacent to my left was a comparable brick home, larger, but very good quality, as well as mine. The, I followed through in acquiring the home, understanding that it's a residential community. To my right is the zoning in question here was a vacant land, vacant land behind me. And I felt very comfortable in, in, go ahead, in purchasing the home. Shortly after buying the home, weeks or maybe a month or so, I found a sign on the, on the subject property was rezoned. Very frustrated, very upset. But following that, I met the owners, and they told me it was going to be a house of worship. As a decorated Vietnam veteran, war veteran, I certainly approve of God and country. And I met them, and they're very nice people. However, changing again zoning... However, changing again zoning to commercial is not within my ideal of moving for a retirement home with some tranquility and living the rest of my life out. The adjacent property was finally, it was moved in instead of built, and I was a little concerned about that. It also looked like a twinplex, which concerned me. And, but however, it was very tastefully done. I have no problem with that. And, but thinking about a commercial property, what it could be, what it could evolve into being over years from here, maybe a tavern, maybe a dog kennel, I don't know. I know that's not the subject of today's debate, but that's how I feel about it. I don't want to put up with a bunch of traffic. I don't want to put up with a bunch of noise. That's about it on that. The only thing I request is that the commission please deny the request. Furthermore, I do hope and pray that the owners pursue their request or their original intent as a house of worship. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Edward, and this is my wife, Linda, and we're the ministers of the ministry building there on 14th Street, and we're just here to answer any questions that council might have.
I guess then before that, we have some comments. Mr. Kerr, nice man, but he's incorrect as far as not knowing that this was going to be a church. Before he purchased the home, we were outside doing yard work, and him, his son, and the realtor came over and saw us doing yard work and asked us about the property. And at that time, they asked what was going to be on that corner lot. And I told Mr. Kerr, his son, and the realtor that we already had gotten approved for a conditional use to have a place of worship. So at that time, if it was going to be something that bothered him, I would think that he wouldn't have proceeded forward with the purchase of the property, knowing full well that we were already in transition of having this built. I understand that maybe here in these last couple of weeks, or, well, backing up, this has been a two-year and three-month process on this building. Nobody knew that COVID was coming, and it hit a lot of businesses really, really hard, and even places of worship. So it was, it was hard completing this. There was a supply shortage, you know, people couldn't go to worship, so we lost all of our congregants. We went and met with the city about three months ago, and met with Aaron Vanoy, and asked him to get, if we could get a zone change, because we were going to have to sell the building, because we were kind of in over above our heads with the required things that the city was requiring us to do on the building. But at that time, he assured us, he told, he's the one that suggested a coffee shop, why don't you do a coffee shop like all these other churches? And I said, well, I thought we couldn't. So we had hope again. So we got out a third loan, and we proceeded forward with doing this as a coffee shop, thinking that we were already approved for one, only to find out at the beginning of January that we weren't. So that's where we're at right now. It was, it was a surprise to us at the beginning, but the city has been very supportive. When we met with Mr. James, we, we had to redo the pedestrian sidewalk. We didn't know that we had to have a ramp on the pedestrian sidewalk. So we spent another $10,000 having half of that sidewalk, the pedestrian sidewalk torn out, and putting the dome in, and putting some additional parking to satisfy the city. And, you know, everybody's been great to work with, and we've complied with everything that we were supposed to comply with. But yes, everybody in the neighborhood was well aware that we were, we were doing this, and, and that we were talking about a coffee shop, as some of our neighbors had asked us to do before, but we weren't going to do that because of cost. But now we've gone forward with this, again, not knowing until the beginning of January that we weren't approved for it.
Okay. Anyone have questions for the applicants? Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment. This is a difficult case in my mind. We talk about the protection of our neighborhoods from zoning changes that allow commercial development into the boundaries. And while this is very close to Chadburn, it is not on Chadburn. It is in a neighborhood. And I don't see any other businesses close to it. You've mentioned that there's a funeral home nearby?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher, how far is it?
About two blocks to the northwest. I believe it's, and actually, I'm...
To the northwest?
Yes. So I, one of these here, I believe, is the funeral home, and then the other one is the church. I can't remember which one's which, but it's, like I said, they're right about here.
It's still one on the corner, that corner, that big building.
Okay.
Or larger building.
All the other improvements around this site are single-family. Is that correct?
Within the immediate block, yes, correct.
Are other churches zoned the same way?
No, the other church got a conditional use, and then the funeral home was, was very, very old, got a special permit.
And I'm just like other churches around town, are they, Paul Ann, Emmanuel Baptist, I know those are that area. Are they zoned that same way? Or, I know they're in the middle of residential, or some of them.
So our understanding of the difference between what Paul Ann does, and I think what they're doing, is they can market that coffee shop as an independent shop separate from the church, even if it's run by the church, whereas Paul Ann, I think, you still go in and pay, but it's really, it's not open to anyone that's not really part of Paul Ann, it's part of that, part of those services. And so really, I think that this one certainly wasn't a typical case. I think the fact that it's on a, on a corner close to commercial, and also that it would be accessory on a small property. I think if this was, you know, coming in like Sonic or Chick-fil-A or something, we would definitely deny this. But I think given the small footprint and the fact that the site has already been built out, to have an accessory use, I think a lot of, and again, not all cases, but a lot of institutions are struggling with costs and trying to do this. At the same time, we, we certainly understand the neighbor's concerns as well.
Yeah.
It's not a conditional use, it's a rezone.
And that's what I have a challenge with. When you rezone it, you open that up for the future for a whole lot of other stuff.
Exactly. And that's the concern I have with...
If we were doing a conditional, if they ever did away with it, then it goes back.
Right.
Correct. I mean, I think, so that's, that's, I have a concern with that as well. Not against the coffee shop, just rezoning.
Sure.
Totally.
Jeff, just out of random curiosity, again, because I understand where everyone's coming from, giving it a CN zoning, since it's an RS2, is it able to be zoned RS1 and then get a conditional use? Like, what is the other church that's doing this? What is it, what was it zoned before the conditional?
I think it was all RS2. So if you're in RS2, you can do a conditional use for a religious institution, like a church.
Okay.
But you can't do a commercial business. You can't, there is no conditional use option in the RS2 for a church. The only way to do that would be to, to do a zoning. And by doing the one zoning district, it allowed both the church and the coffee shop.
Right. But the other church that you had mentioned that was next to the funeral parlor, do you remember what that was zoned in order to get the conditional use?
Yes, that one was zoned RS2.
Wait, did I just miss? You said you can't get a conditional use on RS2.
No, no, I'm sorry. In the RS2, you can get a conditional use for a church only, but you can't get it for a church and a retailer or coffee shop.
I apologize. I thought the other church had another business as well.
That's okay.
And you, you all have the ability to rezone a property, or recommend rezoning a property to what the applicant is requesting, or something more restrictive? And, so in other words, if they were asking for general commercial, you could recommend that, or neighborhood commercial. And so one option you would have available is to, you could recommend a rezoning to a planned development that would be based on the, that zoning, but, but limited to this particular use that they want to do. We'd have to include some conditions in, in order to make that happen, but that is an option.
Except, John, I don't think it's an acre. So I don't think they could do. The, the other option I believe you could do, you know, and I, I didn't bring it up because I knew that was going to take longer. You could do a rezoning to office commercial, which would limit it to office-related and not all the retail, and do a conditional use on top of, so you'd have to do another rezoning to CO, office commercial, with a conditional use, and the conditional use would just be limited to these two types of uses. That would require them to come back again, though. So we thought that one application, and we have approved CN in very limited cases in neighborhoods. It's not always done, but this was a unique situation.
It's just a slippery slope in my mind, and that's the problem that I have with what's proposed.
Sure.
And it, and it PD is, is really, I mean, that's, in the, in the, in the proposed use here, it's almost like spot zoning, which is not good. We want to be consistent in applying our zoning across all standards. And I know that it doesn't seem fair to a church that wants to have a coffee shop, but if we're not consistent with the way that we enforce our zoning, we're going to have an assault on all of our neighborhoods. We're going to have requests like this every month. And if we want to look at changing our zoning rules, then, you know, we can address it comprehensively. I just, I, I personally, I don't feel comfortable rezoning this to commercial because of all the single-family that's around it. It's established. If there was, if you were showing me a stretch of road that has commercial development spotted throughout it, we've seen stretches of that, and, and that, to me, makes more sense. In this instance, it's, it's very, it's very isolated, the way that I'm, the way that I see it. And I have a hard time supporting this.
Are you all, would it change if, if you knew that the only two uses happening there would be the coffee house and the church, and not opening it up to other types of retail? Or is it just you don't want the coffee shop either?
I think a business operating in this location is, is a challenge. And I think that churches obviously get a lot of leeway when it comes to where they can, where they can set up shop. So I don't object to a church. I don't object to church-related activities. But for me, the, the line is drawn with commercial. When it turns into a profitable business enterprise, that, that, that's the line for me. But I'm, I'm one person on this panel, so I may, I may be in the minority here. I'm just sharing my thoughts.
What year, what year did we originally see this case? And when I, when I look at the site, and I look at that portable building that was brought in, and I look at the sidewalk to nowhere, and I look at this parking lot that's paved, I, I've been here since 2016. I'm sure it happened way, I'm, I'm sure it's happened since I've been up here. I just have zero recollection of this case.
I believe it was 2018 or 2019. It was within the last three or four years.
Okay. Well, that's interesting.
It's a church.
Yeah, I mean, it's here nor there, but I would personally like to go back on YouTube and see where in the world, how that happened. I would like to just see how we looked at this case back then. I have zero recollection of it, but I'd like to see how Mr. Kerr was, how that big portable building wound up next to his home. Personally, I would just like to see how that happened, but it's here nor there anymore, right? It's theirs today.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak on this case? I'm going to close public comment, and if anyone else wants to share their thoughts or make a motion.
Okay. Just, and I asked Luke this a second ago, what about, I mean, could they do, I mean, because they've already spent so much money with the sidewalk and making it handicap accessible. Like, I do, I feel awful for the applicant, just in the sole fact that it's financially draining, and they're trying to recoup some costs. But I also see Mr. Kerr's side is a, and this might be more for staff, so Jeff, I don't know, what about like a coffee truck that's movable? Is that allowed in RS2?
I believe there's some limitations on that. It has to be so many feet away from a house, and it can only be so many hours a day. It's, it's very difficult for, for a coffee truck in a residential zoning. They could do it, but it would, they'd have to keep moving it all the time, if I'm right about this.
Okay.
Jeff, what was the misunderstanding that, you know, they were approved only to find out 16 or 20 days ago that they were not approved? Seems like, you know, to the point that's been made, a lot of dollars, changes, configurations have been made, and I don't know if it was just lack of knowledge that they weren't approved, or what's occurred? Any kind of timeline?
I think originally, what, what we understood, and Gonzalesis could correct me if I'm wrong, is originally it was going to be a house of worship. And then I think later, I wasn't involved in that next discussion, but I think there was kind of like what Paul Ann does, where, you know, the coffee shop is, the proceeds go to the church only, it's part of the same congregation, and so it's, it's possible that they may have thought they were allowed, because that type of coffee shop would be allowed. Once you open it up to retail and you have other people coming in and not just congregants, then the line goes into, it falls under retail sales and needs a rezoning. So I think, again, I wasn't involved in all the discussions, but I think staff's thought at the time was it was going to be a coffee house related to the church, and not something that could be opened up to the larger public, which, which triggers a rezoning.
So would the signage be the trigger? I mean, if it was a, a coffee shop within the church, and, you know, the congregants did come in, so making it retail or commercial would require a sign, the sign would then make it commercial? Or what's going to trigger that? I mean, they could come back and everyone says that, you know, they're members or congregants, but there seems to be a real fine line there, unless it was signage or something that stated it was a coffee shop.
I'm going to be very brief, but I'm going to give you the planning reasons. So it's sort of logical in terms of transportation and the number of, of traffic. If you're, if you're, say you're Paul Ann, all those people that come in on Sunday morning are the same people then that would use the coffee shop. It wouldn't be open to everyone else. That's my understanding of it. If you turn it into a retail coffee shop, what that means is that other people could come in at any time, and so then it opens up the door to lots of traffic, you know, not necessarily a lot of traffic, but more traffic at, at different times, and not just the people that are going to the church that would get the coffee. But if I'm not a member of that church, I could drive in on a Tuesday night, for example, they could stay open late, and then they could go to the, use that coffee shop.
And you're right, it's, it's kind of a gray area, but it's, it's kind of, you know it when you see it. You know, if, if they're selling coffee on Sunday mornings and Wednesday nights, then, you know, that would lead you to think it's for the church. If they're open every morning, every day, whether or not they have a sign or drive-through, then it's probably a retail coffee shop. And there's some, you know, there's, you could probably think of examples where it's, it's closer to one or the other, and, you know, you're not quite sure. But it really comes down to kind of a code enforcement question of what, ultimately be what you could convince, you know, the judge is, you know, does it meet the standard or not? And it really comes down to, is it truly accessory to the church? Or is it its own standalone use, is the ultimate question?
Again, as Jeff said, he wasn't in on the conversation that we had with Mr. Vanoy when we went in to see if we could get a zone change. And at that time, we were told that we didn't need it, because we were already approved as a church, as a, as a coffee shop, or an au frappe place, or a daycare. He pulled it up on the map and showed us. At that time, we had put it up on the market, because we had told him, we're not going to be able to do this anymore.
Right.
And so when he assured us of that, we went ahead and took out a third loan and moved forward. Also, we had mentioned to Mr. Kerr that we had put it up on the market, and he told us that he didn't want us to sell the building, he didn't want anybody else there. And so we were encouraged again, once, once again... And so we were encouraged again, once, once again, to go forward. There is a triplex next to us. We're, we're RS2, but there's a triplex next to us. Illyana's is down the street. Hidalgo's is a block down. We're surrounded, and then the other church they're, they're talking about is half a block. So we're surrounded by businesses. Um, uh, the other thing that I think, uh, Mrs. Davis mentioned was, the way I understood it was that if we did get, uh, approved for this coffee shop, then if we did sell the building, it would revert back to just RS2. Um, this would be...
That's not what's proposed. The request that's been put in front of us is to change the zoning, the underlying zoning of the property, which would allow anyone, including you guys, to operate a commercial business in that location. And that is the objection that I have to what's proposed.
But it's restricted to neighborhood commercial, not fully?
Correct. Yes, sir. There, and there are limitations within the zoning, but it, it runs with the land. So if you guys sell it, someone else can come in and open a business in that location. Um, that's the, that, that's the, that's at the, at the heart of, of my primary concern with what's proposed. I, I'm not, I, I'm not against you guys in trying to have a, a, a business that can be successful there. I, I'm, I, I just don't like the zoning.
And it's not a, to correct, it's not a single-family, it's a two-family, uh, it's an RS2.
It's RS2 zoning.
RS2 zoning, yes.
Yes, sir.
And I guess I just...
But it's, but it's residential zoning, right?
Yes, but I guess I just don't understand why we are made to do it commercial, to commercial standards, if it's residential. Our setbacks had to be commercial, a trip, we had to have a triple sink, handicap ramp, hand washing.
I think it's because it was a church. You, you were putting a church in a neighborhood, and within, within the zoning rights, churches have a lot of leeway in where they can be located, including in neighborhoods, like, like this site. And so, even though you're in a residential neighborhood, because you're a church, which operates in some facets as a commercial enterprise, you have to meet the commercial standards for that structure, no matter where it's located.
Yeah, it's a ministry, as a conditional use, and I think that's where I wondered why then it were made to do commercial, because it's, it's conditional.
Yes.
Not permanent.
And I, and I'm, and I'm sorry for the confusion that you've had with the staff. And I'd, I'd love to try to work something out. I, I'm, I'm, I'm a capa, I'm a compassionate person, but I, I understand that you've spent money on this project, and you'd like to, to, to at least recoup your investment.
Right.
Um, but I hope you understand that, you know, our position up here is, is difficult, and we've had cases like this that have come before us that have been hotly contested. And I feel like a, an important part of my role is to enforce the city's standards consistently. Um, and in this instance, I don't think that rezoning this property to a commercial use is a good idea, because of all of the surrounding uses, because of all of the surrounding zoning. I see that it's close to commercial, but it's not a budding commercial. Um, and that's, we have to draw a line somewhere to protect our, protect the neighborhoods. Uh, if we don't, then we're going to have commercial that just bleeds into residential areas all over our community, and, and we don't want that.
Right, and just mentioning Hidalgo's Restaurant, you know, it's off Chadburn, but...
Yes, it's a block away.
Beside of it, on beside of it, um, about halfway down the block, there's parking right there, off of 14th Street.
I understand, and I, again, the development patterns in our, in our city are inconsistent in areas. Uh, and 14th Street serves as a thoroughfare. There's a traffic light at, at Bryant, at US 87 for 14th Street. So, but when you get east of Chadburn, it turns into a neighborhood. And it's half a block from where you guys are located that the neighborhood really starts. And as you go further east, it's a neighborhood, um, with, with very limited exception. And that's why, that's why I can't support rezoning this lot. Um, now, again, we have to vote as a panel. There, there are other ways to appeal this. There may be other ways to, to get a coffee shop in this location, uh, with, you know, under the church. Uh, I just don't, I don't think rezoning it to commercial is, is the right solution for this, for this problem. Okay?
Okay, well, I'd like for y'all to count the members to consider, you know, we, there was 23, um, letters sent out.
Yes, sir.
And there was one in favor also, no, and just one in, uh, opposed to it.
Yes, sir.
And no other, no other, um, responses.
We will take that into account.
And I think for me, my biggest thing is the city being on the same page, because again, we wouldn't have proceeded forward had we not met with Mr. Vanoy.
I understand.
And telling us that we were in fact approved, so we moved forward with it.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
And I think that's fair to us, especially cost-wise.
Right.
Especially us thinking we had hope again, getting out a third loan, and now to come to this at the beginning of the month saying, oh, well, wait, you're not approved.
Right.
That's not fair to us.
I understand that, and I'm sorry that that's happened to you. And I'm trying to be consistent with the way that we view cases like this, so that you don't, so that there's not a misunderstanding, uh, that you guys would have with us. Uh, if we approve it and it goes to the city council and they reject it, you're in the same position. So I'm trying to be consistent, and I hope that you guys understand that. I'm sorry that you got bad advice. I'd, I would strongly advise you to go back to the city and try to find a way to work something out with them. I don't, I don't think that rezoning this, this lot to commercial is the solution, and that's what we've been asked to, to look at today.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you all.
Well, thank you for your time.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Does anyone else want to share their thoughts or make a motion?
It's hard, I mean...
I'll make a motion. We go, no, we're in. Um, I move to deny the request, as it was, uh... Hmm, yeah, no, I'll just make a full-blown denial. Deny the request.
Great.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the recommended rezoning. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, five one.
Would like to see if there's another option for it.
Yeah, he said that.
Absolutely.
But it doesn't have to be part of my motion, so they, they know they can go back to the city and figure something out. It didn't need to be in the motion.
Yeah, if you said that they might be able to get like a PD or something, or some...
So they have, they have two options at this point. They can, um, move forward and, and appeal this decision. I believe it's within 10 days, and, and give us a letter, and it would go to city council at the next earliest meeting. Or they could withdraw and come back with a office commercial zone change, which would at least not allow any retail uses, and with a conditional use. But again, that's, that's going to drag it on, um, longer, so those are the two options. I think, again, staff knew that, but felt that the, you know, when we talked to them, the CN was the, the fastest way, and again, and we, we still believe that this is appropriate in this, in this particular block, maybe not in all cases. So they can move forward, or they can withdraw and try to come back at the other option.
So if they decide to try to... Another alternative to this, they know who to speak to? If not, could you just make sure that they've got the correct contact info?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next item is conditional uses. The planning commission, commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to the city council. CU 2201, 45, 46, Southern Oak Lane. A request for approval of a conditional use to allow a short-term rental in the zero-lot line twin home and townhome residential RS3 zoning district located at 46, or excuse me, 45, 46, Southern Oak Lane.
All right, thanks commissioners. Uh, request for a short-term rental use in the RS3 zoning. This would be a new short-term rental. Uh, this is looking at the existing house in the street view. Uh, so we did get, uh, a couple opposed, and then we got a, a bunch more on, on Friday. Um, staff is still in support of the request, but we do have, uh, eight letters in total opposed. We provided those to you. Uh, most of them didn't have comments on it. There was one, uh, with one of the residents, and she did provide, uh, some additional information in the letter, um, I attached to you. So none in favor, eight opposed, 26 notices were mailed out. Um, but again, staff still, uh, supports the request. There's no short-term rentals within 500 feet. Uh, there's no plans to make any changes. It's still going to be inside of a home, as we've done many, many times. Uh, rental being an RS3, which is probably even better. It's a multi-family zoning area, so it kind of supports, um, more density and more housing choices anyway. Uh, we believe there's a community need for a short-term rental in the Bonham and, and Southland area. We don't have too many short-term rentals there. So staff's in support with three conditions of approval. These are pretty standard. Um, they have a minimum of two parking spots, so maintain those. Maintain the short-term rental in a manner consistent with the zoning ordinance, so they'll have to renew in a year, and then every subsequent two-year period, and then a, a fire inspection, uh, through the building permit process, when they come in for their certificate of occupancy. Any questions?
Do we have questions for the staff?
And again, most of these letters came in on, on, it must've been very late Friday, so we got them out as, as quick as we could.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. We're going to open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this case, please state your name and address or single-member district.
Larry Miller, 3630 Briar Grove, uh, single-member district six. My problem with this is, as it's indicated, is a zero lot. These are in close quarters, and because of that, the residents of these places have to have a, a great deal more courtesy in dealing with the closeness and proximity of their neighbors. These folks are very concerned about noise levels, they're concerned about rowdy crowds coming in from everything, from a graduation ceremony to the rodeo and so on. This is a resident, a residential community that's primarily senior citizens, so they're extremely concerned about that, parking, and the whole gamut of problems that can come up as a result of this.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Uh, I built most of these patio homes over here, probably a couple hundred of them. Uh, the density is, is, is pretty intense, and the neighbor, I don't know the neighbor personally next door, but it, that wall typically has a glass block window in it, and it is open to that side yard. And, uh, with the school over there and the traffic, the traffic's pretty tough anyway. So I hate to see, we start over there, once we start there on patio homes, there're going to be one over 500 feet. Thank you.
Thank you, Rocky. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment. You know, generally speaking, when we talk about short-term rentals, there's a, there's, there are a lot of similarities between short-term rentals and long-term rentals. Uh, in many instances, there are benefits to short-term rentals, I think. Um, obviously, the fire regulation, uh, and inspection of a home is, is, uh, one, one big benefit that is not required of, uh, a long-term, single-family rental. Uh, but I, I recognize the, the density of this specific request, the lack of parking. Is there a rear garage?
Yes, car with a garage.
Yes.
And does it meet all of the parking requirements set forth in the short-term rental?
Yes, and just, just to point out...
Guide lines?
Correct. So when it's a short-term rental, the owner cannot be in the home at the same time, so it's just basically whoever that family is leaves, and then it's rented out as a short-term. So the minimum two parking spaces are provided, so it's the same as if a, a family lived there.
This is tough.
Can you pull up the notification page again, or slide?
Yes, sir.
We open it up for public comment again.
Uh, Rocky Templin, I would just like to point out that back when these were built, the zoning was R3, which was anything under three-story apartments. So at the time, these didn't have to be rezoned to R2 or R2A to build single-family patio homes. So there could be apartments there today, but they didn't have to rezone it. So if this was zoned R2 or R2A or R1, I don't think you'd be having this situation.
Okay, thank you. It's a lot of opposition.
Yeah, that was gonna, you know, my comment was, is, we have seen, I mean, since, since that ordinance was passed moons ago, we were, two of us, I think three of us were up here with the STRs. Typically, you, other than the, the, the initial ordinance, um, this is the first time that I have seen an STR come up here, um, and, and be this contentious, right? I, typically, there's one or two. It's usually the immediate neighbor, and they just don't like them because they don't like them. Uh, but we have, we have eight, uh, in, in one case, and I, I think it's probably something that we shouldn't ignore, and I think we need to look at it, other than rubber stamping it. Typically, the STRs get a rubber stamp, right? Are they following the criteria? We all know that an STR has a more robust safety and inspection program than any of us would.
Yep.
Um, but we, we can't ignore the fact that, uh, there's this many people, um, that are asking us to take a closer look at this.
And the density?
No doubt. I think it's super tight over there. I think it's tight as it is. I couldn't imagine, in my opinion, even though Jeff, you're saying they meet the parking criteria, I'm, I'm having a hard, I'm having a hard time with that one, but, uh, because I've been to those, I've, I've been many times when Rocky was building those out. I mean, I've, I've seen these 100 times, and, uh, that is, that is super tight, uh, over there.
No, I think it's, rarely do we get eight responses, period.
Yeah, it's rare.
You know, so that tells me something there that we probably don't need to disregard.
I think when we started doing these, and they council passed that ordinance in '07, most of them were down at the lake. They kind of started, or along the River Walk, and then as time went on, more people saw it as an investment. So, um, now we're getting more in, in the RS2 or RS3 districts as well, so definitely, yeah, something to look at.
I've said it from day one, I think STRs have their place, and I think there's, uh, they also have, uh, places where they're, they're not ideal, uh, and I think we have our, this would be the first one that, uh, that, that I'm giving this much thought to. I will, I will tell you that I usually look at the rubber stamp. They following the rules? Are they doing what the ordinance says? Yes, then here we go.
Yep.
Uh, this is just a little bit different, and, and it is, uh, certainly puts me at a level of discomfort.
I do agree with all of y'all. Um, you know, I look at it, um, as if that does pass and does turn into, um, an STR, I feel like the potential renter, based on neighborhood, would be, I mean, the, the cost to rent it per day or per week, or whatever it might be, um, would be considerably higher than a general STR, you know, so you, you might end up with a traveling nurse or something in there. So I do see it both ways. Um, you know, obviously, there is a lot of opposition. Parking is an issue, um, but again, I would see that the cost of the stay would be escalated compared to some of the other ones that we've had in front of us.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. The clientele that, the clientele that this particular property...
Correct.
Is, uh, is not what you would see, in my opinion, is probably not going to see what we see downtown or at the lake.
Right, or at the lake, exactly.
Uh, yeah, and that's a great, that's a great point.
Since y'all have seen these, how, what's the approximate square feet of the home? I mean, I mean, we're concerned about noise, and is it 1,200?
Rocky, no, they're typically like 15 to 1,900 square feet. Is that, that's...
I just put in about 12.
Oh, you do have some 12. I think that one's like 15.
So 12 and up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is the applicant here?
Is the applicant here? No.
Yeah, the, the flip side to your argument, which was a good one, and I, and I totally agree, is we can't regulate who's going to be there.
Exactly, yeah. No, 100, 100 percent.
You know, we, we can't tell the homeowner it's travel nurses only, right? I mean, I get it.
Yes, no, 100 percent. And again, I see both, both statements, you know, because again, I agree that the parking's challenging, and there is a lot of opposition. Again, I just, looking at short-term rentals and the lack there in San Angelo, again, ones that are in nicer, or, you know, again, the price point on this, if it were to be sold on the market, they obviously have to recoup their cost on their nightly stay. So again, they'd be charging a higher dollar or a higher premium.
Commissioner Davis, appraisal district has it as 1,800 and... Commissioner Davis, uh, appraisal district has it as 1,876 square feet...
Oh, wow.
With a 441 square foot garage.
Okay. Perfect. I thought it was 1,500, but... Okay.
Anyone wish to make a motion?
I make a motion that we deny this request based on the, um, the number of oppositions and the, uh, the zero lot line because of the proximity of the homes.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the request for short-term rental in this location. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So six, zero to deny. Master thoroughfare, master thoroughfare plan amendment. City council has final authority for approval of master thoroughfare plan amendments. MTP amendment, city of San Angelo, west of Lakeview Heroes Drive. A request to amend the master thoroughfare plan component of the city, excuse me, of the San Angelo Comprehensive Plan to realign minor arterial and minor collector streets located southwest of Sherwood Way and FM 2288.
Rafael Alvarado with planning. I was notified that this case will be tabled.
Can't be right.
So it won't be heard.
Yeah, there's a request to table it. Um, there, this, this is the area where we're looking at that annexation that we talked about earlier. Um, but we're, as part of that, we're looking at the whole street arrangement of that area. Uh, we're working with two or three different developers on that. Um, they've asked that we table this and so we're recommending that you all table it. Uh, it's up to you, it's your decision, but, um, they're working on some different layouts and, and things, so we're in no rush to move this forward. We just thought we were ready, uh, but now they're going to look at some different street layouts and so, uh, we're recommending to table it, unless that has just changed.
We're not sure.
Well, and I would point out there, there may be a notice issue as well. One property owner at least doesn't believe he got the, the, the notices.
So we have a, we have a motion to continue.
Well, table till the next meeting or...
Table?
Well, actually...
Can we kind of throw some ideas out because we, there's a lot of moving parts to this thing.
Do we have a motion on the floor, Chairman?
Uh, we do not have a motion, however, uh, I would, I would, I would like for them to work with the staff on the recommendations. Is, is there something specific that you need our guidance on or...
Russell with SKG, uh, there's, on one hand, we want you to postpone it, but potentially on another hand, depending on what maybe staff says, we may want it to go forward because I, I guess kind of the, the case we just heard about the rezoning and the stuff on Appaloosa, uh, Mr. Templin's, we're working on turning in a preliminary plat for the land that, that Mr. Templin owns. And so our question is...
Oh, God.
Do we generally conform enough with his preliminary plat based on kind of the current master thoroughfare plan that they would, they would give us a, a, I guess, a checkmark of yes, we generally conform?
Or would they say, no, we don't conform enough? We got to revise the master thoroughfare plan? So, you know, what, I guess what we're looking at Appaloosa, this is Appaloosa and that's Pinion and, and currently it kind of loops and, and connects them.
You know, so we're, we're kind of on the... We got too much going on here and, and I guess to help Rocky move forward with the other project that just got approved, we got to do a preliminary plat so we can do a final plat so they can do all of their stuff.
I guess, given that, I would recommend that we, because I'm not sure this would be consistent with the current thoroughfare plan. If we modify it like we're recommending, I, I believe this would be consistent. If something changes beyond that later, we could always come back and amend it again. Um, so that would probably be the way not to hold you up.
Yes, Rocky Templin, yeah, I was just made aware of it last week by the party that's wishing to buy the nine acres on the annexation. Their final plat, they had to have a preliminary plat. In the beginning, we thought they were going to purchase it and then they would do their own preliminary and final plat.
Yes, sir.
So we're trying to get a final plat turned in today. I mean, a preliminary plat.
Okay.
And I would add on the notification issue, we're not obligated either by ordinance or state law to notify anyone of a thoroughfare plan change. We do that as a courtesy. Uh, if, if the only person that we believe didn't get the notice was Mr. Templin, he clearly has noticed because he's here. Um, and even if we didn't send out any notices, again, that's, our ordinance doesn't require that, nor does state law. So I don't believe that's a problem.
Okay, so we have a request from the staff to table the thoroughfare plan discussion. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
Yeah, still moved. Did we table it?
Okay, we have a motion and do we have a second?
Well, I think, I think they've changed their minds instead of tabling it, they want to go ahead and actually move forward with it.
Okay.
So we can go ahead and present the case.
We did not have a second, so that motion failed. I would just withdraw it. It's been withdrawn. Okay.
Rafael Alvarado with planning. This is the master thoroughfare amendment to Twin Mountain Trail, or Twin Mountain Drive, I believe, and Appaloosa Trail. Total area of the properties through which the current, uh, future thoroughfares intersect is about 2,600. Um, it's just outside of city limits, near the south U, US Highway 67. And the commercial, I mean, the future land uses for the area around US 87 are commercial. Everything else is, uh, neighborhood. And this is a statement, um, I guess, proving the staff's rationale for the amendment to the master thoroughfare plan. The proposed amendments are to, uh, minor collectors and minor arterials. The other road that's also, uh, connected is Pinion Ridge. Pinion Ridge, uh, this little one right here and then Appaloosa. So I, there was a development task force meeting, if I get the, the verbiage correct, in which two proposals were, were shown. Um, this is the first proposal in which Appaloosa Trail, uh, is proposed to go directly across the, the Tex, Texas Pacifico Railroad. And staff realizes that that, in its own right, is a very difficult possibility, uh, getting, I guess, access through the, the Texas, I mean, through the, the railroad property. The other changes, major changes are to Twin Mountain, this red minor, minor arterial. There is currently an existing storage facility, uh, right on the path, on the previous future proposed path. I could show you it. You could see it very clearly. Uh, it's, it's this entire facility and the, the future path had it going straight through, through there. So the new path for the, for Twin Mountain proposes it to follow, to be pushed further south and to eventually connect to Chapel Hill. What's, what's currently Chapel Hill? The other major change to Twin Mountain is this bend here. There's existing topography in the area, which makes it, um, unfeasible for the road to, to be built through there. And then the other change that you should keep an eye on is this, uh, curvy bit here that extends off of Coral Way, which Coral Way is over here on the eastern side of the Meridian Plat. So this is proposal one. Proposal two, Appaloosa stays, it's, Appaloosa Trail stays the same. Um, no change to Twin Mountain. However, this minor arterial is now proposed to go straight. Um, so the changes to the minor, uh, collectors come about with future annexations in the area and the future lands subdivisions that will take place. The changes to Twin Mountain are really, uh, to, topographical or, um, relating to existing conditions. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the master thoroughfare, uh, plan amendment to Twin Mountain Drive and Appaloosa Trail.
I don't think I have anything on this. So are you asking us to pick between the two proposals?
Go back to those. No, I think we're recommending, um... I want to say it was proposal two, is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, we had, we had met with a group of developers, including the three primary property owners in that area of large tracts of land. And these were the two proposals we presented to them, um, and this was the one that was their preference. And staff was fine really either way. We just wanted to be able to plan out the future roads, uh, in the area. So we're recommending that you approve proposal two, uh, as a change to the thoroughfare plan.
Okay.
And I should add that this recommendation will go to city council.
Right. Okay. Anyone have questions for the staff? All right. Thank you, Rafael. We're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? Please come forward. State your name, address and single member district.
Rocky Templin. Um, of course, this kind of caught me off guard. I didn't even know it was going to be on the agenda today. And so, uh, the meeting we did have in the past, uh, I think we talked about a bunch of different options and I don't think, you know, one of them is on there. So, I mean, if I have to choose one, uh, I don't know that, I don't know that any of them are going to be a fact by the time we get there. Uh, Appaloosa, I don't believe, I'm not an engineer, but it will not cross the tracks because of the owner on the other side and the railroad and the railroad commission and the elevation of the railroad. I just don't think it will happen. So I'm, I'm always confused why somebody just draws on there, and I'm colorblind, but why somebody just draws on there with colors wherever they want them and they're not even realistic, you know? You would think that they would use a city engineer and try to figure out the best situation for the property that's there and then come up with that. So, so I don't really have an answer.
And I can answer that last part, that the thoroughfare plan is a generalized plan of, of where we want major roads for long-term connectivity. Uh, but as you can see, if you look at the whole thoroughfare plan map, we can't go out and engineer the, the exact location of every, every road. The idea is to get a general sense of where roads are going to go. And if a developer comes in and shifts it one way or moves it, that, that's all part of the process that, that we can work out. Uh, what we don't want to happen is if we don't show roads on a map like this, uh, we don't want a developer to just build a subdivision, don't connect through, and all of a sudden you don't have through roads connecting throughout the city. So, um, these are very general and obviously, you know, that may or may not cost the railroad track and those roads may not end up exactly where they're shown on the map. Uh, but for the purpose of a thoroughfare plan, it's intended to be general from the beginning.
Okay. I'm going to close public comment. Anyone wish to make a motion?
I'll see the other proposal.
And really, the only difference is how that, if you can see with the extension of Pinion Ridge, which is that east-west road, um, you can see how, um, the road south of that, and I forget the name of that road, but it, it curves in and tees into Pinion Ridge. And on option two, that road continues and tees into the north-south Appaloosa. That's really the primary difference between these two.
Okay.
Right, can you go back to proposal one? Oh, okay, I see. Need to like layer them.
That would be really confusing.
Yeah.
And again, as I mentioned a minute ago, we will continue to work with all of the developers in this area.
Yeah, it's just a guideline.
Um, those roads can shift around quite a bit without having to come through you and city council. Uh, in this case, it's just that, um, what was one through street that connected Appaloosa to Pinion Ridge now becomes a T or a, you know, a cross intersection and that's kind of what warranted a, a change in the thoroughfare plan. But if necessary, we can always bring this back i- if development needs another change.
Ready for a motion?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to proceed with, uh, proposal two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, recommend proposal two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six, zero. I think that does it, guys. Director's report.
I really don't have anything. I just appreciate all of y'all's work and I do appreciate the development task force and all the folks that worked with us on getting the sidewalk ordinance, uh, to where it is. I think it's something that everybody's comfortable with now and that was our goal all along, so I appreciate their work and y'all's work as well.
Future meeting agenda and announcements, the next regular meeting of the planning commission is scheduled to begin at 9:00 AM on Monday, February 21st, 2022. Adjournment? Anyone? We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six, zero. It's 11:50.